Alright. Sounds good. Good evening. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for November nine, two thousand and twenty-three is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure that this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the City of Boston's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep their video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment, and the time for commenting is time constraints required. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening, Ms. Bedabrazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening. Floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we go and start off, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals to see moving into cases this evening? And hearing none, we'll move on to case BOA one four seven six six eight four with the address of seventeen Waldemar Avenue. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you so much. My name is Carlos Aradondo, and I'm here on behalf of myself and my wife, Joanne Aradondo. We're the current owners of seventeen Waldemar Avenue. We reside right next door at fifteen Waldemar Avenue with our three children. We purchased seventeen Waldemar Avenue about roughly a year ago. Our intention with the house was to have our extended family move in and live there. However, after we purchased, interest rates raised, and you know, the financial burden kind of became a little bit more than we could than we could handle, and so we actually ended up renting out the house. A solution to our problem was to try to convert it into a two-family and kind of solve that problem. We're looking, we're looking out for a variance to turn it into a two-family residential, and we would do so by finishing the basement. So the construction of the basement would be roughly seven hundred and eighty-five square feet, a livable square feet. It would be a two-bedroom, one bath with a kitchen area and a living area. The height throughout the unit would be roughly ninety inches or seven and a half feet. It would have two forms of egress, one in the front, one in the rear, and each one of the bedrooms would have a window, which sits about roughly about four feet above ground and thirty-six, thirty-six inches of height and thirty-two inches of width for any emergency egress necessary. The living area would also have a window in the kitchen as well. The other variance we're requesting would be a variance for the parking space. So as you can see, the, 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 the current property has a driveway that's, that's long enough to fit two cars. However, that doesn't meet code because they can't fit side by side, so we would need a variance. A couple of things that are important to note is the house is less than five hundred linear feet from the T station. It also has ample parking, street parking throughout, and we have a bus stop at less than, less than two hundred feet away as well. So it, it, it also falls in line with Mayor Wu's vision for the city of being more of a commuter-friendly city. So in, in really, anybody who moved into this house wouldn't need a car to be, to, to, to transport themselves around. Another thing that I would like to point out is, while the neighborhood is zoned as one-family residential, it's our, it's our belief that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be out of line with it, with the character of the neighborhood, right next door, what's twenty-one Waldemar Avenue is also zoned a two-family house, and right in front, which is sixteen Waldemar Avenue, is actually an eighteen-unit building. A couple of other things, the construction to the basement wouldn't increase the blueprint of the building itself. There would be no exterior construction to increase, to, to increase the blueprint. It would simply just be the finishing of the basement. Open to any questions that the board may have, please.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So to confirm, you're not seeking to add the second parking space. You're right, you're, you're seeking to keep it as is with one?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I do have just a clarification. When you first presented, Carlos, you mentioned that you had two means of egress, one through the front and one through the back, but on your drawings, I only see one mode of egress, which is through the front. So in this basement, in this basement level, you have one at the front.
Correct, ma'am. Apologies. So there is one where the living area is. That, that's the, that's the rare form of egress, and then where the bathroom is, that's the other form of egress. So that actually goes to a staircase which leads outside. Apologies if the, if the, if the plans don't, don't indicate that properly.
So when the, the egress stair near the bathroom on the first floor, where does it land?
It lands to, to the side of the building. It would land, it would land on
To the, so I'm looking at the first floor. Is it to the top of the left, the dining room or the living room? I guess you have two living rooms.
Correct. On the first floor, it would land to the right of the building. If you, if you're looking, if you're looking at the
The entry?
Correct, ma'am. Correct. There, so there, there, there's going to be an exterior, exterior exit there as well where, where that would land.
Okay, so the basement level plan is just oriented ninety degrees clockwise?
Correct, ma'am. Correct.
Okay. And what's your height of your basement?
The height is, so finish would be ninety inches or seven and a half feet?
Okay, okay. Great. And the grade, so the finished grade on the exterior? Where, you know, so is the basement level, is it, where's, where does the grade hit on the basement level? To the, to the finished floor?
So I believe it would be below, below grade, ma'am. However, we've never had any issues with flooding, and we've actually dug out. When we purchased the house, we, we were very cognizant to, to, to dig out a French drain throughout to provide ample drainage for, for the house to, to
So the window, the windows would be kind of egress windows?
Oh, apologies. Correct. So yes, ma'am. So, so it's on a slope. So the, the very front of the house, the basement at the very front would be below grade, but then as, as it, as it slopes down, the windows would be, would be above grade. Correct, ma'am. My apologies about that.
Okay, great. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melo Villagomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting for this project on July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. One of Butters was present and shared their support for the project. The applicant was not asked to present at the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council due to the fact that there was no work being done to the exterior of the home. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that there be no building co-violation.
Is there a second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA one four eight two zero five eight with the address of six Essex Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes. Hello, this is Timothy Sheehan. I'm the architect for the project. What we're trying to do here is add space to an existing single family. What we're, our, our violations are, we have a rear yard setback violation, which is fairly, if you look at our site plan, it's fairly minor. It's, we have fourteen foot, four inches to the addition on the extreme left edge of the property. We have an oddly shaped triangle a lot. So, you know, the majority, the majority of the yard would be over twenty feet. There were a setback, so fifteen is what we have to hold, and we're, we're at fourteen point four in that left corner. And of course, you know, we're in Charles Towns. We, we, we're in a restricted roof district, and we're doing dormers. So the building consists of now currently, there's a finished basement that doesn't meet code. There's not enough windows. The ceiling height meets code at seven foot six. But what we'd like to do is put an addition on the back at the first floor level, which would allow us to get light, you know, we'll have a double-height space, which will allow us to get light down into that family, what we would call a family room and a den in the basement. We'll put a bathroom down there. We put a twenty-two-foot addition off the back of the building, sort of around where you see the kitchen now. The kitchen's currently projects out, but we build around that. It would be a sloped roof. And then that's the bottom portion of the work. And then up, up at the top, the third floor, we have a current master bedroom with two dormers in it and low eve height. What we'd like to do is put, you know, a new Nantucket-style dormer on the front of the building, and the back of the building, we would do a shed dormer and a, a projection over the existing two-story L, so about five, five foot, ten inches out. So that, that'll get us our fourth bedroom. That's the job. You know, we're under on FAR. We have a decent enough piece of land at FAR two point O, which we don't have an FAR violation, which is odd for a project this size in Charles Town. But what we're here for, yeah, it's, it's all, yeah. So what we're asking for is for the rear setback, and, you know, we're asking for the dormers. We're asking, you know, within the restricted roof district. With that, I'll, I'll hand this off to you for questions if there are any.
Thank you. Just quickly, how much square footage are you adding?
Nine hundred and fifty-five total.
Questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. It's a pretty modest addition.
With that, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on September twenty-seventh. Noah Butters were in attendance. We've since received no letters in support or in opposition. We're unaware of many concerns at this time. We'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Danielle, are you looking to give testimony here? Send a request to unmute you.
Thank you. Hi. No, I, I defer to, to Tim, our architect, to describe the project well.
Okay, you're the applicant. Okay.
I'm the applicant.
I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the plans be submitted to B P D A for design review to ensure it's consistent with the neighborhood design overlay and with the planned Charles Town design guidelines.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have case BOA one five two fifty-nine, seven nine with the address of one fifteen Salem Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Hi, good evening. So we are proposing to open a Mediterranean spot. It used to be another business. We just took over, and we're just changing pretty much that type of food. We're not serving any alcohol. We'll be serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner from eight to twelve every day, and then on the weekend, we open, we'll be trying to open till three o'clock just to serve food. No dining in, and no delivery as well. Just take out, take out and dine in.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Are you making any modifications to the interior?
No, no modification. Cooking will be on, on the first level, and there is a basement. There will be no cooking downstairs. Just the, yeah, walking.
So, so it's just to remove the petition-only proviso?
I'm sorry?
You're, you're seeking a, a change of the proviso, correct, to remove the, the takeout to the petition-only?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. We had the applicant send out flyers to Butters within three hundred feet. We had two businesses nearby call. We understand that they sent their comments into the board with some concerns. The applicant went on to meet with the Nunnick Association as well. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck, sir, and ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have three companion cases, the first being case BOA one four five two five nine nine with the address of seventy-three to seventy-five Calhoun Street. Now, along with that, we have case BOA one four five two six one zero with the address of thirty-one to thirty-nine Lancaster Street. And the last case with that is case BOA one four five two six one six with the address of nineteen to twenty-one Lancaster Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Yes. My name is attorney Justin Kennedy. I represent Lancaster Parking LLC.
Great. Please proceed.
These three parcels have been used as open-air parking lots for several years. Basically for selling parking spaces for a fee. We're looking to renew the licenses on these three parcels and continue the business that they've been carrying on for probably the last forty or fifty years in, in the North End.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. We had the applicant circulate flyers to Butters within three hundred feet. We did not hear back from anyone, I believe. They went on to meet with the West End Civic Association, which has sent in a letter of non-opposition. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Hands, yeah. Well, Chris, are you, you're part of the developments team, right?
I'm assisting attorney Kennedy, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, before we do that, there was a comment submitted by B T D. I believe the applicant wants to extend it for three years, and B T D had a comment to extending it for only two. I don't know if anyone is present from B T D to further explain or not.
Thank you. So noted.
Yeah, I was curious, I was curious about why the recommendation to go two years instead of three, but seems like Bob didn't explain.
No, there was no further information. So that's, that's all we have. And so unless anyone else from the applicant wishes to address that, I suggest we make a motion.
Okay. Great. I'm sorry, go ahead, Nora.
Then I will go ahead and make a motion to approval.
I second that to approve it.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five zero five seven seven three with the address of seven Chestnut Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services with the mailing address of one thirty Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. Joining me in this presentation is the architect Mark, Mark Van Brecklin, who will provide the board with some photographs. We seek a variance to construct a small deck on an existing one-story addition, which abuts the foundation of the property to the rear at, on Mount Vernon Street. There is no rear yard setback of the properties on Mount Vernon Street adjacent and abutting the property. The existing one-story addition is ten feet high, twelve feet, eleven inches long, and ten feet, seven inches wide. What is being proposed is a small deck from the second story from the kitchen on the second story and a staircase down to the patio. The proposed deck would not increase the dimensional non-conformity and would provide open space and an enhanced visual landscape. The existing deck is a a tower roof, and above it is cabling. The cabling would be placed under the deck. The proposal would provide two things: enhanced living space, open space from the kitchen, and also a life safety egress. The property is unique in the sense that there is no access to the rear property or to the adjoining properties. The egress is through a dedicated walkway internal to the building out to Chestnut Street. If the board grants the variance in its variance for the insufficient rear yard, it would provide a enhanced means of egress from the rear second story of the property out to Mount Vernon Street through the dedicated walkway internal to the building. The property, the proposal went through a very aggressive community process. We have received the unanimous support after a second hearing from the Beacon Hill Neighborhood Association. During the process, the community process, there was concerns voiced by the abutter at five, one abutter on the first floor of five Chestnut Street concerning privacy and the protection of an existing tree growing in the five Chestnut Street rear yard. The proposed purchases, the property is under agreement, the proposed purchases. Liam and Carolyn Walsh met a few times in the unit at five Chestnut Street and satisfied the concerns voiced by a landscape proposal, which is a part of the presentation. If we could scroll down. The lower section shows proposed planting, which would be recessed, and you see the shadow of the existing tree. This, the, was, this satisfied the concerns voiced, along with the commitment by the Walshes to retain an oberus to address the overhang of the tree. And we submitted this plan as a sub, as a part of a substitute plan to address the commitment of the Walshes to the adjoining abutters. There have been letters of support, seven letters of support for this proposal, and we would ask the board to consider if it approves the variance not to submit it to the Boston Planning Development Agency, since it may alter the commitment and the plan, which satisfied the concerns of the abutter. Otherwise, the plan received unanimous support. The Civic Association and seven letters of support have been submitted on behalf of the board. If I could ask Mark to provide the board with some photos of the area showing existing roof decks and rear decks that also have no rear yard setback. Mark?
Thank you, John. If I understand, I'm not allowed to share screen, but I have nothing further to add.
If there's anything in the slides, that's fine. You can just ask them to scroll to that page.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't show clearly in the drawings, but just to point out, there are numerous, probably two dozen decks in the, in the rear immediate adjacent properties.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, then, are there questions from the board? Okay, here. So let's, let's move to public testimony.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maggie Van Squay from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. We held in a Butters meeting on August twenty-fourth for this project, where a few concerns were raised by a couple of residents of five Chestnut Street, as mentioned by the applicant. They were concerned about the roof deck blocking natural light and leading to a loss of privacy. Since that happened, then the applicant met with the Beacon Hill Civic Association first in September, and then they worked with the Butters to come up with a landscaping plan that helped resolve the privacy concerns. Following that negotiation, the Beacon Hill Civic Association voted unanimously to not oppose the project. We received two letters in support of the project and two letters in opposition from, those letters in opposition were from Butters at five Chestnut, but those were received prior to the landscaping agreement. So again, we'd like to defer the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised? Yep, no worries. Hands, thank you. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with two provisos. One, that you preserve the neighboring tree, and two, that you provide adequate landscape screening to provide privacy to your neighbor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five two six four six zero with the address of ninety-three to ninety-five Welsner Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? I see Becky Kong, who appears to be the applicant, so maybe she needs to be elevated to panelist? Or I did see her. Now I don't. There you go. We see you, but we can't hear you.
Unfortunately. Oh, boy. Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can. Yes, please.
Apologies for the technical difficulties. Good evening, Madam Chair and the board. This project is to convert existing attic space from unfinished space to an open living space. We will also be adding a full bath consisting of a toilet and a shower. This, we are adding a shed dormer in order to add more living space and raising the roof, AKA increasing the building height, is in order to ensure that we meet code for the internal ceiling height, which is planned at seven feet, six inches. Thank you. And are there any questions at this time?
Questions from the board? Hearing none, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Morning, Madam Chair and members of the, morning, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Diana Branch up from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a Butters meeting on October fourth, where we had no Butters attend. The West Village Neighborhood Association invited their membership to the meeting. We've received no statements or questions about this project, so at this time, we defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. No raised hands. Thank you. Did you say there were raised hands, Jessica, or no raised hands? Okay, I'm sorry. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, given that there's no opposite Madam Chair, given that there's no opposition to the project, um, and it's been vetted through its, the neighborhood, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Next, we have case BOA one five one three six seven one with the address of twelve fifty-one to twelve sixty-nine River Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Abner, are you on? Where you're at? Your attorney? Oh, do you know what he is on? I know he was having some issues earlier. Um, Abner, I'm going to unmute you. I'm not sure if you fixed your, um, issues with your audio. Can you hear us? I see him. I mean, I see the name. He's been on all day. Um, Abner, we still can't hear you if you're speaking. I know you're on, it looks like you may be on two devices. Oh, yeah. To him. Okay. We still can't hear you if you're trying to speak, sir. Can I suggest we move forward and circle back to him so we can keep moving forward? Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Chair, that's, that's fine. We can circle back.
All right, Norm?
Then we will move on for now to case BOA one five zero five zero eight one with the address of thirty-one Pondview Avenue. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yeah, I'm here, Tara Hassan. I'm joined by Marcus Piras, who is our contractor. Uh, members of the board, uh, thank you for, uh, giving us the time. Uh, I co-own thirty-one Pondview with my husband, Simon Reese. We have, uh, two kids, a three-year-old and a one-year-old, and we have, uh, elderly parents that are frequently visiting for long periods of time from Europe. Um, we're proposing to, uh, add a bathroom and then extend an existing bedroom above an existing first-floor structure on the back of our house. So if you go to the, uh, plot plan, that's probably easiest to explain what's happening. So we're not changing in any way the footprint of the house. Where it says second floor under construction, there is already a bump out at the back of the house that was built in nineteen twenty-nine. The proposal is to simply add a second floor on top of that structure. The reason we're here, the reason we're requiring zoning relief is because the side yard set setback is insufficient. So the main structure of the house is six feet from the lot line to Miss Chin, uh, was in Lot F, um, which is, uh, less than, uh, nowadays, it was conforming at the time, but, uh, when the house was built, but it's not conforming now. Um, we have, uh, yeah, so that's our violation. We have a letter of support from Miss Chin and, uh, also from the abutters to the other side, Lot D, as well as from the abutters, uh, at the back of the house. We went through, uh, a process with the Jamaica Pond Association that voted not to oppose the project, as well as the JP Neighborhood Council. Uh, overall, uh, this adds two hundred and forty-eight square feet to the house, uh, which is below far. Um, the design of the project maintains the house's original character and style. Uh, there's no adverse impacts on neighbors, uh, and there has been no opposition voiced as far as we know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
No, no questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Yep, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judge from this board. As you heard from the applicant, uh, there was positive community outreach, uh, with some of butters expressing support. Uh, they went on to meet with the Jamaica Pond Neighborhood Association and understand they got support from the JPNC. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no raised hands. Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, the house is an existing non-conforming structure. Um, the renovation is very modest. With that, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA one five one nine one nine four with the address of twenty-two Sunny Bank Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Um, yep, Nick is on. One second. Nick, I sent a request on mute you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Nick Parker. I live at twenty-two Sunny Bank Road in West Roxbury. I'm petitioning to put a freestanding shed in my backyard. The, uh, the plan that you're looking at is actually a little bit out of because the uh, setbacks from the rear and side of my properties should now read four feet, not three feet. And I believe that I, uh, need a variance uh, for violation Article ten, section one, through lot accessory building op, occupying front yard. Um, the rear of my property actually has frontage onto a private way, Maple Terrace, and I believe I need, um, variance for the location of the shed in reference to that property line in the back.
Got it. In other words, it's not your front yard.
Correct.
Um, any questions from the board?
No question.
Hearing none, may we, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, uh, we had the applicant circulate a flyer to a butters. Uh, we did not hear back from any residents, uh, or butters in the area. Uh, they went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted unanimously to support this proposal. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant provides a survey plot plan showing the location of the tool shed and to note the height.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
At this point, we'll move, we'll move on to the rediscussion. Um, case with the case BOA one four two eight five six eight with the address of eighty-four to one hundred River Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Yes, thank you very much, Cameron Merrill, uh, on behalf of Mr. Vinnie Lee, the applicant. Uh, office address, one hundred State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Uh, this matter is, uh, coming back before you for rediscussion as we had, uh, additional, uh, uh, community discussion. Uh, River Street Civic Association had asked that we flyer uh, a much larger portion of the neighborhood than was required by the Mayor's Office, uh, which we did, uh, and thankfully, uh, as a result of that, had a, a large meeting. Uh, there was overwhelming support at that meeting, and we received many letters of support, uh, from the neighborhood, which I believe are, are submitted to you today. Uh, but, long story short, we're before this board because a nail salon on the first floor is a conditional use, whereas on the second floor, it is an allowed use. Uh, this is a strip mall, uh, on River Street. This space has been vacant for quite some time. Uh, and the landlord, who I do not represent, uh, is very eager to have a tenant in this space. Uh, Mr. Lee has a long history of owning and operating nail salons. He has two in South Boston. He has one on the South Shore. Uh, he does a very high-quality product. Um, I believe I submitted some photographs, uh, but he will put a significant amount of money into this site and, and operate it. Um, in conjunction with the project, he has, uh, promised River Street Civic Association several community benefits, which he fully intends to comply with, uh, which will provide, uh, services at discounted rates to senior citizens, among some other things. Uh, uh, for the record, uh, as you know, a conditional use permit, uh, by this board needs to find that there's uh, no, uh, hardships or hazards imposed on the pedestrians or, or vehicular traffic in this area, adequate facilities have been provided, uh, that, you know, the last couple provisions don't apply, uh, but effectively that there will be no adverse impact, and we all believe they will, there will be. We believe this is a net benefit to the community, uh, and Mr. Lee will operate a good shop in this location.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judge from this board. Uh, we had two abutters meetings, the first, February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, then another one, March fourteenth of twenty-twenty-three. Um, as the applicant's representation mentioned, uh, we've received thirty-one letters in support of this proposal, uh, many of them from RCA, uh, and for an opposition. Um, after a lot of, uh, conversations with the River Street Civic Association, um, they ended up agreeing on some community benefits, uh, which led to the River Street Civic Association offering their support with this proposal. Uh, we have tremendous confidence that Mr. Vo will take, uh, proper steps to ensure the requests of community benefits are fulfilled and will be an asset to our community. Um, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I really applaud the applicant's, um, genuine, um, contribution to the community, especially the aging population, uh, with, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's see if, uh, we can get Mr. Joseph on. I think he might be on this phone. Um, he said he was using his cell phone. Um, are you, uh, let me just see. Abner, are you on the call on seven two one? Can you press start the re to unmute yourself if you're still here? Abner, are you still with us? I see his name, so is he's here, just not able to access somehow? It seems like. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Newman, you have a way to contact him yourself, or I hate to defer this. You're also on mute, Mr. Newman. Oh.
My apologies. Uh, I, I'm not familiar with the applicant or, um, his, his proposal, unfortunately, so I don't have the means of accessing him.
Got it. Abner, are you, I see you tried unmuting yourself. Are you able to speak?
Madam Chair, it seems he's unmuted right now.
I know, that's why I'm asking if he can speak. Uh, I, I, I'd rather not defer this because he's here, uh, and it's pretty straightforward, so I would love to give him the opportunity to present if possible. Abner, if you're still on, maybe you can call my phone. Um, can you give me a call and I could, I don't know if I can try to put it on speaker, um, please? Oh. Hold on. I'm gonna put my number in the chat. I know we don't, we do this. Can you give me a call?
I do have a phone number for him, so I can call, I can attempt to call him as well.
If you don't mind, that would be great. We'd just love to, you know.
Sure, just, just bear with me.
Serve, serve him in a timely manner.
Yeah, certainly. All right, give me one second.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Hi, is this Abner? Hi, this is Connor, so I'm, I'm on the hearing right now. They're not able to hear you. Um, sure, so I'm gonna put you on a speakerphone and, uh, we'll just go from there, all right? All right. All right, sir, you're on. Abner?
Yes.
Yep, do you want to go ahead?
Okay. Sweet. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and, uh, members of the subcommittee. My name is, uh, Abner.
You need to put him clo- closer to the mic, uh, Mr. Newman.
Yeah, hold on, Abner, I'm just trying to get you closer.
Okay.
I think, I don't know where it is on the computer. Um, Abner, you want to try now?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
We're good, we're good. Go ahead. Better.
I'm visiting before you, Madam Chair and members of I saw on the, uh, site, where, where fifty-one dash twelve, uh, six ninety, the street in Hyatt, Massachusetts. There was a, uh, proviso restriction on that address, uh, before, and that was warranted to the previous business owner, which was, uh, River Royal. Madam Chair and member of the subcommittee, there was, uh, there, there, there is no major changes made inside the, inside the business. The, the restaurant is currently open with, uh, with all business licenses, uh, prior a week for the board to remove the proviso, proviso restriction.
Okay, Mr. Joseph, just to clarify, you said no major work, so is there any interior or exterior work you're doing, or just the removal of the proviso?
Basically, there was a little bit of, uh, uh, renovation made, uh, uh, inside, uh, inside the building.
Okay, um, I'll defer to questions from my colleagues. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, was, was the renovation just cosmetic?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I see in the middle of the plan, um, it seems like there's a column in the middle of the space, and then there's lines on the ground. Are those lines, uh, dashed to s- to show like a beam above, or are those actual steps on the floor?
There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a, uh, there's a
I'm sorry, say it again?
It's a step there.
Uh, there's, there's one on the floor. Could you repeat that part?
It's a little bit of entrance. When you go inside, when you go inside the, uh, inside it, but they actually, there's a, uh, to go, to go straight.
Yeah, now I see it, uh, in the plan. It seems like there's a ramp to the left. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes.
Okay, perfect. I, I didn't quite see the ramp, but that answers my question that it is accessible, so I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, let's open up to public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services will defer to the board at this time. I, I don't have a ton of information. I know we previously assisted, uh, with this proposal. Our, our High Parkley is on, is, is in a different role now, uh, but I will state I, I'm unaware of any concerns at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Newman, and for your assistance to connect us. Any other, uh, comments, uh? Ms. Thomas?
No raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you, Mr. Newman, again. All right, I think, uh, is that it for our cases?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, then. Everyone, have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Have a good one, have a good weekend.